Hello and welcome to the 2025 Candidates Forum sponsored by Wallingford Community Women in conjunction with Wallingford Government Media. I am Elizabeth Guidone, your program moderator. This segment features six of the 12 candidates running for the Board of Education. We ask that the audience be respectful of everyone here, even if you disagree with what is being said. We have much to cover tonight, so please no interruptions from the audience, and please hold off on clapping until the candidates' closing statements have been delivered. The format will be as follows. The first part of the program will consist of questions asked of the candidates by members of Wallingford Community Women, Deborah Hicks and Deborah Phillips. They will ask questions of each candidate. The candidate will be allowed two minutes to respond. The next question will be asked of the second candidate, and so on. Each candidate, if they so wish, will have one minute of the question-and-answer period to provide commentary on any of the questions asked to another candidate. At the conclusion of the question-and-answer period, three minutes will be allowed for each candidate to deliver a closing statement. Before beginning the questioning, I'd like to introduce six of the candidates running for Board of Education. They are, from left to right, Brenda Schuler, Democrat; Carolyn Reynes, Republican; Michael Voto, Democrat; Donna Regan, Republican; Duncan Craig, Democrat; and Jennifer Pazaretti, We will now begin with the questions. Debbie, would you please ask your first question of Brenda?
Yes, Brenda. What is your most important concern regarding our education system at this time, and how do you propose to try to remedy that concern?
Well, one of the things that I am concerned about, after you're asking me, is communication. I think that, overall, we lack communication in speaking to one another and talking and sharing information, all right, and getting along. It doesn't make a difference whether you're a Democrat or a Republican. We are here to serve, we'll be here to serve our children and to serve the community, all right? And part of that means talking and getting along and sharing information and growing our town, our schools, and our communities, all right? And I think that we fall short on that in Wallingford. And I believe that by working together and having an open dialogue and discussions, that we can move forward for our children, especially for our children. You know, I didn't put my glasses on, so I don't know what that said, "One minute, two minutes." No, that's my being vain. I'll put that on for that, all right? But yes, I believe that across the board, we need to communicate better. We need to listen and learn from one another, and hopefully that will create a better school environment and a better community for our children.
Thank you, Debbie. Would you please ask the next question of Caroline?
Given the increasing emphasis on both academic achievement and student well-being, how would you prioritize funding and policy decisions to support a well-rounded education in Wallingford schools? How would you ensure equity across schools and grade levels in implementing these strategies?
Thank you so much for this question. So, in order to increase academic achievement and student well-being and to tie this in with funding, serving a term on the Board, as I am in my capacity right now, I've had several constituents come to me very concerned that our teachers aren't always supported in the classroom, and whether that means they don't have instructional coaches, paraprofessional educators, extra funding in order to take their students on field trips, anything to bolster the academic process that they're trying to achieve for their classes. And I think that in terms of funding and equity in the different schools, this is something that has come up to the attention of the Board most recently with the music programs at the two separate high schools. In fact, we had parents coming to meetings saying that one high school, Lyman Hall, did not have an equitable program compared to the other high school at Shan. And I do think that, as a Board, when we're making decisions, especially at budget time, we can look at perceived inequities, especially in terms of our academic programming, and we could go to the drawing board and we can not cut funding for our classrooms and our teachers so that we can promote equitable resources among all the schools in the district. And that was just one example. I could give more, but you know, I only have such a limited amount of time, so, thank you.
Thank you. Debbie, would you please ask the next question of Michael?
How would you ensure transparency and accountability in the Board's decision-making processes?
I think that we have developed transparency and accountability. I think, can you improve on it? I think you always can improve in many areas. We have a number of things. First of all, we have our Board meetings. They're on YouTube, they're live now, the regular Board meeting at the end of the month, just like This Is Live. There's your transparency. People can watch these shows or these Board meetings and get an idea of what's going on in our school system. At the regular Board meeting, our superintendent and our assistant superintendents get up and give their report. There's your transparency. I think that we also have PTACs. These are the organizations in each school where parents are involved in some of the things that are happening in that school to understand what things are going on, and then they all come together to a system-wide PTAC meeting where they share their ideas and let other schools know the things that are working in their school. So there's a lot of little things that come together. I mean, I could, there's a lot, but I think that those things and I think Board members expressing their ideas at the meeting, being vocal, and sharing their ideas is also a way of being transparent. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie, would you please read the next question for Donna?
Given the increase in special education students in our schools, how would you address their needs and make sure their individual learning plans are implemented, given the current budget restraints?
Thank you for the question, and I am going to go back to the previous question where Dr. Reed made a really good point. When it comes to special education, we are legally bound to follow the plans that are implemented by the Central Office and by the teachers and by the group that makes that decision. And so legally, we are, we do, and we provide that education as we require. In addition, we have Assistant Superintendent Amy Turner, who does a fabulous job of going after grants and making sure that we take care of those students and that we provide as many resources as we can to them. For example, she went through our last Board meeting, she went through some of the grants that she has applied for, and how those grants are being applied. For instance, we are going after a grant through the state of Connecticut where we will now have wheelchair access onto our playgrounds, and so that our students who aren't able to walk can still enjoy a playground and go out there, and I believe it was a swing for a wheelchair. And so we work with, well, we listen to what Dr. Turner, what Amy Turner is doing, and we have a very robust special education program here. We are opening up our brand-new Transition Academy, which is out on 4 Field Boulevard, which will help our students transition into, well, not civilian life, but transition into the real world by giving them the skills that they will learn at that academy. So we'll just continue to support that through what Amy Turner's doing, so, thank you.
Thank you. Debbie, would you please ask the next question of Duncan?
Are you in favor of a cellphone pause during educational time? How do you plan to support teachers and staff in enforcing such a policy and communicate with parents about the benefits of such a plan?
Thanks for the question, Debbie, and thanks to the community women for hosting tonight. Just to piggyback off of what Dr. Roscoe said in the first meeting, I think that the important thing to acknowledge when you're talking about something like the underpouches is that, while that might sound great in theory, I don't know that we have $80,000 to spend on that right now. It sounds like, from my feedback with teachers and parents that I've talked to, that the current pause has been going well. I know that Dr. Roscoe was, you know, obviously had great things to say about it during the last session. I will say, as a 36-year-old, I was a little bit surprised to learn that, you know, when I was in high school, it was back in the days of the early flip phones, and it doesn't sound like the enforcement has changed a whole lot, or really the regulations. It sounds like if there is an issue with the cellphone pause right now, it's maybe a lapse in enforcement from school to school or period to period, so I think we could maybe work with the schools to kind of tighten that up, because I think, generally speaking, unless they're having a free period, the students shouldn't be on their phones in school. Thanks.
Thank you. Debbie, would you please ask the next question of Jennifer?
Connecticut has chosen to uphold diversity, equity, and inclusion, DEI initiatives, in our public schools despite federal pressure to eliminate them. How would you promote inclusive practices like culturally responsive teaching, staff training, and student support in Wallingford if federal funding is reduced or eliminated?
Thank you for the question. So when it comes to reduced federal funding, I think a bigger issue that we were facing very recently, and the public may not know this, is that we are in danger of losing our title grant funding. So there's funding that comes down from the U.S. Department of Education, it funnels through the state of Connecticut, and then it comes to our district that directly supports our high-need students, our teachers, and our overall academic achievement. And like I said, we were in danger of losing that. We were very relieved to find out in July that the federal government released that funding to us. And, you know, without that funding, without that federal funding, it would have greatly impacted our budget. It would have impacted our programs. It would have impacted our taxpayers. One minute remaining. So when we talk about federal funding, I look at the bigger picture, and I want to see what's the greatest impact to our students. And that was something that we came very close to losing. As a Board, we worked very closely with Central Office. We kept in communication with them, we kept monitoring the situation, and we took the opportunity to advocate whenever we could so that we didn't lose that funding. And 30 seconds remaining. And we're very happy that we did get that funding, and our students and our teachers and our academic achievement programs are going to be supported now. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie, would you please ask the next question of Brenda?
Brenda, what do you see as the biggest challenge facing our students today, and what would you propose to do to remedy that?
The biggest challenge for our students today, I believe, is social media and cellphone I believe that there's a lot of disinformation that our children receive, and it impacts them in school and impacts them in their daily life. And I believe that we all, every single person in this room, every single person in our community, owe it to our children to understand what is happening in the world and how it affects them, what they see, what they hear, how that affects what they think about, the fears that they may have, the dreams that they may have. And then it becomes incumbent upon us to help them to achieve those goals with school, working with teachers, working with community, working with parents, so that we help them to bridge that gap, because it's very scary out there, all right? And it's scary for our children. We have racial disparities, we have problems within the community, and all of that is because we don't understand one another. Again, I believe communication is the key. My father used to say, "I don't know what I don't know." And we need to bring that to our communities and into our school so that we show people by understanding and by action that we are willing to make changes and listen to one another.
Thank you. Debbie, would you please ask the next question of Caroline?
How do you plan to get consensus from the various community sectors about the two versus one high school issue?
Thank you. This is probably my favorite question of them all. So I've been pretty vocal throughout my term on the Board that I am a pro-two-high-school person. This decision was made by the Board, not during my term. It's a decision that I don't think we have to live with, but we are right now, as I'm one of nine voices. In terms of trying to get a consensus on the one versus two high schools, I'm not sure that that is achievable. You might be able to get a consensus on what the one high school should be, but in terms of a consensus from the one versus keeping the two, it may have to go to a referendum. That might be something that the public themselves have to vote on. They've asked to vote on that. I personally have put on the agenda two items that have been there since February, which are contingency plan and a revote for the high school. We have yet to finalize anything. The Board itself doesn't know the location of the potential high school that we've been looking at. That's concerning to me. So in my opinion, it's hard to get a consensus when even me, myself, on the Board, don't have all the cards. Basically, to wrap things up, I think that it would be not my place to try to merge the one high school versus the two high school people as a Board member, but I do advocate for the two high schools. Perhaps the town needs to have a referendum. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie, would you please ask the next question of Michael?
Given the rising incidence of school violence in our country, do you feel that Wallingford's plan to limit and respond to violence within our schools is adequate? Please explain your response. If not, what would you change?
Okay. I think we're very much prepared for violence. We have SROs, ASSOs at middle school and high school. We have recently put in these vestibules between going into each school, which helps monitor who is entering the school. We have those cement posts in front of every doorway in each school to prevent, for instance, a car going through. It seems that, let's face it, you're going to hear me say a lot, children, first, a few times that I have a question here, and I think safety for children first is important. And I think that's why we are very into providing these little, these little, these safety measures. One of the other things is lockdown procedures. We go through that. It's like a fire drill, but inside the school instead. If there's something going on, the teachers are made aware, the kids go to one part of the classroom, there's usually a shade on the door, we're prepared for that. So we've made a lot of things. There's a lot of other things that I can't speak about because that ruins, you know, the safety, so you can't talk about everything, but I think those are some of the things that we've done to deal with violence if it were to happen, and let's hope it doesn't. I think so far, we've been pretty good.
Thank you.
Oh, and I forgot to thank you all for doing this tonight. That was one thing I did for you at the beginning.
Most welcome.
So I thank you and your group.
Debbie, would you please ask the next question of Donna?
Do you think the distribution of school funds should support intellectual competitions as much as it does the physical competitions? Please explain your answer.
Thank you for the question. So I do think that there should be an equal distribution, and I do sometimes think, though, that the intellectual competitions don't always get as much attention. I would like to say, and we did give a shout-out to the Shein High School Mock Trial team, who won the state championship in May of 2025. There's been, so, and we did bring them here in front of the Board, and we celebrated them just as we celebrated the, all the achievements of the physical activities, the baseball team who won the state championship as well. So I do think that we do support them equally. I am so happy to see that the intellectual competitions are as successful as the physical ones, and that we do try and celebrate every achievement, whether it is the intellectual or the physical. In addition, I believe Shein won the music competition. I'm trying to go back through my brain, but I know that the music competition is also very high. I went back to, I went to the musical competition for Shein just two weekends ago, I think it was, and it was great to see the number of people and the parents and the support that that competition gets. So I do think it's not just a fiscal support that's important, but the moral support that we give them both the equal attention that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie, would you please ask the next question of Duncan?
Duncan, what can be done to attract and retain quality educators in our school district?
Thanks for the question, Debbie. Obviously, the teachers are the backbone of our school system, and particularly when, I think, more than 80% of them, of our teachers, rather, live in Wallingford, I think we owe an obligation to them and their families and to our kids, most importantly, to make sure that their teachers are not burnt out, first and foremost. I hear from a lot of teachers these days, and to sort of piggyback on the special education question, when you have almost one in six kids in the district that have an IEP right now, and you constantly have class sizes fluctuating, we're, I hear from a lot of teachers requiring them to wear a lot of hats. I've heard from teachers that have to teach different periods in different schools across town. If our teachers don't want to go to work and teach, our children are behind the curve. Our teachers are our most important asset in town as a community, and we need to make sure that they're heard, A, and B, that we're addressing those concerns. I know that we have, that, well, the Board is going through negotiations with the Teachers' Union now, so it probably shouldn't get into this too much, but I think that the teachers are our most important asset for our school system, and that the more that we're listening to them and empowering them, the better off our kids will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie, would you ask the next question of Jennifer?
What is your current involvement with Wallingford Public Schools, not including after-school events, and when was the last time you visited a classroom in support of teachers?
That's a great question. So my involvement in Wallingford Public Schools, obviously, I'm serving my second term on the Board of Education, so that's big. I also have the opportunity to partner with many of our organizations in town that support the Wallingford Public Schools, organizations such as SCOW, which is the Spanish community of Wallingford, We Care, Wallingford Public Library, Youth and Social Services, YMCA. And by being part of those nonprofits, it helps me stay connected to the needs of our students at Wallingford Public Schools. As Dr. Roscoe said earlier, we, as a Board, are not supposed to be entering the schools to sit in classrooms and observe. That is not what we are part of, we're not allowed to do that. However, from time to time, we do get invited into the classrooms, and I take every opportunity to accept those invitations. My favorite thing to do is reading to the children, I think Dr. Roscoe said the same thing. I love going into the elementary schools, reading to the kids. It's my, it must be my favorite part of the job, is reading to the kids. And parenthetically, if you're having a crummy day, if you're having a really crummy day, find a child and read to them. It will make your whole day so much brighter, so much better. So yeah, that's my involvement at Wallingford Public Schools. That's all for me.
Thank you. At this point, we will now allow each candidate the opportunity for a one-minute commentary on any questions presented to a different candidate, anything they'd like to follow up on. Brenda, do you have a one-minute comment?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to comment on diversity and inclusion. I believe that Wallingford sorely needs to step up its game on that. We have many diverse folks in our town, different backgrounds, different religions, different ways of living, and we need to include them, and we need to make sure that they feel included. And that's a big part of what happens in school, to make every child feel like they're included.
Thank you. Caroline?
Thank you for the opportunity. I would just like to say a few things in regard to retaining teachers and keeping teachers in Wallingford, just that we've been working very hard as a Board, and I will continue to work hard to make sure that our educators feel supported. Every year at budget time, the issue of cutting paraprofessionals from the classrooms come up, the issues of overloading the teachers with what's recommended within our policy and guidelines in terms of students in the classroom comes up, and things that the teachers need or ask us that they wish that they could have as resources fiscally so that they can do their jobs. And I think that we can show them support and retain good teachers by ensuring that they have the resources that they need for the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
I just wanted to expound upon, I think it was Brenda who answered, about social media, and forgive me if I say A1 instead of AI. I always have that problem. My kids laugh at me all the time. Anyhow, I think it's very important in this day and age to address this issue of kids navigating through social media and the use of A1. I think AI, I told you, I think that they need to show, we need to let them know that they should be confident that they can do these things on their own without depending on social media for their knowledge. They need to expound upon their own things, and we need to have them be able to use those skills that teachers teach them without relying on social media or AI. I think that's kind of important, and I think if I were to have the question about the number-one challenge, that was, that's it. I don't want our kids to keep depending on that. They have to depend on their own intellect and background.
Thank you. Donna?
Thank you. So I just wanted to touch upon our cellphone policy just really quickly, and it's really more about mental health. Earlier this year, one of our principals at Mary Frith School, Eric Carbone, presented the Board with a book called The Anxious Generation. And if you haven't read it, I would strongly recommend that everyone read that book, because it does go into the impact of cellphones, social media, just electronics and that sort of digital interface and the impact it's having on the children of today. And so what I would say is that this isn't just a school board problem, isn't just a Wallingford problem, this is a nationwide problem. And so I think the more we can educate ourselves, the more we can help these students kind of unplug, but I think there's something to be said for the ability for us to unplug as well. We need to model what we preach, so I would strongly encourage everyone to read that book. Thank you.
Thank you. Duncan?
Sure. I wanted to expand a little bit more on the, I guess, sort of touched on the special education question, but for those who might not be aware, so according to the latest data, I think we're up to almost one in six kids in our district that have an IEP, which is an Individualized Plan. And as we've discussed tonight, you know, we're required to teach those individual plans. So I think when we talk about teachers being burnt out, you know, class sizes, student experience, I think it's really important that when we consider class-side guidelines, for example, that we're remembering that, you know, it's not just class sizes fluctuating. These teachers are having to wear, take on many hats, many roles, more students, and in some, and in many cases, many more IEPs, and this is all really time-consuming, so we need to be committing to a structure year over year that supports them and empowers them and make sure that, you know, the PERS and the other resources that they rely on are going to be there for them when they need them. Thanks.
Thank you. Jennifer?
For the record, Donna stole my thunder with the Anxious Generation book, great minds and all. Anyway, I still want to talk about the cellphone policy. So I've served on the Policy Committee for the last four years. My first term, I was actually Chair of the Policy Committee, and we did review this policy just a few weeks ago at our September meeting. One of the things that I'm very proud of is before we decided to make any changes to the cellphone policy, we first reached out to our building administrators to see if what the current policy, how it is working in practice. Is it working? Are there any gaps? It was so important for us to get the input from the individuals who, on a daily basis, are enforcing our policy. from the individuals who, on a daily basis, are enforcing our policies because we want to make sure that we put forth policy that is effective, that's fair to our teachers and administrators, and is focused on learning, supporting that learning. So, and I'm over time. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the question-and-answer portion of the program. Each candidate will now have three minutes to make a closing statement. We're going to keep you on your toes and start on the left with Jennifer.
You're in for a real treat. So thank you. Thank you again to the Wallingford Community of Women for hosting tonight and doing all the hard work. I'd also like to give a shout out. In the back of the room is Superintendent Belizzi and Mr. Corso from Lyman Hall. Thank you for always. And we've got some more central office people here. Thank you for always supporting us. So when I moved to Wallingford in 2001 as a single mom, I was looking for a fresh start. I worked as a waitress at Seraphino's Restaurant and a cashier at Stop &amp; Shop, just trying to get back on my feet. Wallingford represented a second chance for me, a place of opportunity, of support, and community. And for the past 24 years, I have truly made Wallingford my home and has taken, have taken every opportunity to give back to this community that gave me so much. As the daughter of a third-grade teacher, education was always very important to us. And I believe that our town's strength is reflected by our schools. And Wallingford has so much to be proud of. Our public education system is one of the big parts, one of the big reasons why families choose Wallingford to come and build their lives here, just like I did. I would be honored to continue to give back to Wallingford by being elected to a third term on the Board of Education. I've worked so hard over the last four years to support our students, our teachers, and our families. And if I'm given the opportunity to be re-elected, I promise to keep that commitment going and to always keep advocating for what makes Wallingford so great and to do what's best for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Duncan?
Sure. Thanks again to Debbie and Debbie for moderating and to Wallingford Community Women for hosting and for everyone for joining tonight. First, I just want to say, I want to acknowledge all the hard work that the incumbents have put in over their careers. I know many of you have been here for a long time. I have all the respect in the world for everyone up here, for everyone on the board. It's a really thankless job, and I know that these guys all care a lot about our kids. So not running against anyone on this stage, I am running for my nine-month-old daughter and for the future of our schools. A few things I know is that over the last decade or so, our district enrollment has dropped by 18%. Our town enrollment has dropped by 4%. Our proficiency scores are constantly lagging behind in whatever reference group you want to look at. And our teachers are beyond frustrated from, from the sound of it. And the elephant in the room is that, you know, the irony of being on the Board of Ed is that we can't control our own budget. What I can control is being a fighter. And I might not be able to, I, I think the single biggest problem in Wallingford right now is a lack of consistent school funding. You can go back 10, 12 years. It's very rare for Town Hall and the Board of Ed to see eye to eye. We need to stop treating the Board of Education like just another department because it's not. This is a recruiting tool for our town. You want to recruit young voters to your town, have them pay property taxes for 40 years. It's not the Public Works Department that's going to recruit families here. Our teachers need to feel empowered. Our families need to feel empowered. And our middle-class families need to feel like they are seen and heard. We have one of the premier prep schools in the world, really, in our backyard. And it's embarrassing that our schools continue to lag behind the rest of our neighboring towns. So again, I have all the respect in the world for everyone on this stage. But if you vote for me for the Board of Ed, and I'm honored enough to represent Wallingford, I will fight like crazy for every dime of funding that our school needs, and I will provide the transparency to the public that they deserve throughout the funding process. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna?
I'd like to thank the Wallingford Community Women. And in the back room, there are government TV. Thank you, guys, for supporting us and helping us out here. So I have made Wallingford my home for over 25 years. My husband and I have raised a family here. We have put three children through the school system. And we just two weeks ago moved our business back here to Wallingford. So Wallingford is our hometown, and this is where we want to stay. We, I did leave my job at the end of May so that I could devote more time to the Board of Ed, to the Regan Foundation that we've started, so that I could give back to my community. It's a very big part of what I do and who I am. And so I consider it an honor and a privilege to have been on this Board of Ed for the last two terms. Currently, I am the operations chair for the Board of Education. It is a challenging position. It is just challenging in general to be on the Board of Education. I'm not going to lie. We have a lot of the reasons, I will, let me go back. There are only five things that a Board of Educate, that a Board of Education is responsible for, and I really do think that this is important. We are to set policy. We are to review curriculum. We are to hire administration. We are to oversee the budget, and we are to supervise the superintendent. And so when we receive feedback that we're not doing our job, it's very difficult because we are sometimes challenged by what we can do. But what we can do is, to Duncan's point, is fight for every penny that we can get during the budget season. We can work with our central office to make sure that we are getting the grants and the funding that we need, that we are chasing down every penny that we can get to help our students succeed. And so I would just ask the town to go ahead and support me once again in my bid to be on the Board of Education and to continue working with the eight other people that we work with to really put our children first in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
I would like to just start off with some personal things. I have been a, I taught for 36 years, and I was an administrator for 10 or 11, actually. So I have the experience I think it takes to be on a Board of Education, and I think I have used it. And I think people have put your, you put your trust in me, the voters, because this is my 12th term on the Board of Education I'll be completing. And I love doing this. Education is my life. It has always been. In my family, I have a daughter who's a teacher. I have a son who's a principal. I have a grandson who's in college, and he's into a teaching program. So it's part of our lives. I totally enjoy doing this. I enjoy reviewing policy as policy chair right now. I'm chair of the instructional committee. I'm chair of facilities. I've been a chairman of the board in the past. Now I give it to everybody else to do. I, I have been, I've been on negotiations for all the negotiating union, for all the unions we have, which I think has really been an eye-opener. And I know exactly where we stand with job descriptions and pays and all that kind of stuff. So I, I'm in, I know what's going on within the school system because I am so involved. And I would like to continue to do that. It's something I enjoy. And as you can see, what goes on in my family, so many involved in education, I like that to continue. And I would like to continue to do this job for you. I hopefully have the trust that I can continue to do those things. And I'm also pretty vocal. I'm sure the board members know. And I, I promise to continue to do that. If I feel there's something that should be done or should be changed, or it could be done differently, you will hear me talk. And I will answer emails because I think that's very important. That's part of accountability. I didn't answer that whole question. I didn't talk about accountability enough. But now they're telling me to stop. So I'm going to be accountable to you people. I have one minute? Oh, God, okay. I said everything so fast, I forgot what I said. Anyway, again, I'm going to bring back the word "trust." Please trust me to continue to do the work that I have been doing on the board. I enjoy it, and I ask for your vote so that I can continue doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Thank you so much, and thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. Often, I like to live by the motto, "If you aren't part of the solution, you are part of the problem." This comes from the brilliant 1960s civil rights activist Leroy Elbridge Cleaver. "My parents, who were both raised by teachers, always taught me to leave something better than you found it." While I do feel that Wallingford has a good school system, many people moved to town for our special education program. They like that we have two middle schools. They like the two high schools. They like the variety of elementary schools that we have. We have work to do. And as a board member this past term, I've seen things I can't unsee, and I've heard things I can't unhear. I'm here to represent my constituents and my people. I would like the opportunity to have a chance to do that again. There's some things that I feel is business left undone for me. The middle school schedule needs attention. There are issues with our test scores, our graduation rates, teacher truancy, and morale among our teachers and attendants. Of course, always the question of funding. People come to me with all sorts of concerns, whether it's the track or a basketball hoop. We have infrastructure problems. I like to think of the analogy of the broken windows theory. It might just seem like a basketball hoop to somebody, but when you look, and it starts off as the basketball hoop. Now we have mold on the side of a building. Then there's a little something hanging from the ceiling. And this all is an environment that our students are expected to learn in, our employees of our school district are expected to work in. These are things that I think need attention and need to be addressed. I also hear from people, our music program and art programs are suffering. Teachers need more support. And of course, there's the two-high-school issue. And if I'm re-elected to the board, I will continue to ask the hard questions. I will continue to push for items on the agenda. And I will continue to be a voice, and sometimes a lone voice, for my people because it's the people that elect me. And I always tell people that, no, I work for you. So I would love the opportunity to continue because I don't feel that my job is done here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Brenda?
Hello again, folks. Well, a little bit about who I am. I'm a mom. First off, let me just say I'm a Christian. And I thank God for the ability to be here with you. And it is one of the driving forces in my life. But as a mom, I am a mom of four boys, two by birth and two by adoption. I am a foster parent, a therapeutic foster parent. In my work role, I am a nurse consultant. I work with daycares and preschools, helping staff health-wise and helping staff to coordinate programming and education for our little ones. And so I really, truly believe that it does take a village. It takes a village of folks working together to make change. I am very vocal. I stand for my convictions. And if elected to the Board of Education, I will work very hard for all children so that every voice is heard. Because I really do believe that we have to, all right, engage, and we have to engage in kindness. We've, we've become a nation, a people of just being mean-spirited and unkind to one another. And that doesn't work, all right? We need to be there for one another. We need to be there for our children. And we need to embrace other ideas, all right, in other cultures, all right, so that we can make changes, all right? The Board of Education and the folks that are already on as board members are doing an excellent job. They are, all right? But I do want to become a board member because I do believe I can bring a different flavor, a different type of, a different knowledge base, all right? Because not everyone lives the same life. We all live different lives, and we all have different things that we can contribute. In my lifetime, with my, with my parents, all right, my father used to tell me, as I said earlier, "I don't know what I don't know," all right? But he had a third-grade education, and he put my mom through school. He put my, my, me and my sister, my brother through school. My sister and brother are both educators working in the school system, all right? And I've been a nurse for 25 years. I believe that I can make a difference on the board, that I would bring a different ideology, all right? But kindness is one of the things that I do want to just keep stressing. We need that in this community. We need to work together. We need to listen, and we need to keep our ears open, all right, so that we can be there for one another. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates, for participating in the forum. This concludes Part Two of the 2025 Board of Education Candidates Forum. On behalf of Wallingford Community Women, I thank you for watching and remind everyone to vote on or before November 4. Thank you.